Okay, I call the Sterling Planning Board meeting to order, June 27th, 2024, 6:30 PM. Okay, we've got a very busy night tonight, so I'm going to get right to it. So, first thing on our agenda is an A and R plan for Richard and Diane Malone. Two lots at the corner of Maple Street and Chamberlain Road, tax map 107, lot 28. Rick Malone's here. Rick, you want to come up? Anything you want to say? Roll that out.
Nothing much to say. You want these?
Please, yeah. I've looked it over. Anybody on the board who have looked it over? Does anybody have any questions or find anything with it? I didn't see any thing they needed corrected, everything looked good.
Nothing.
Can you find a typographical? So is everybody good with it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Everybody's all set, then I'll take a motion that we approve the A and R plan.
So?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I will sign that for you, Rick.
You could sign a paper, copy for our files.
All right. Let's just use this one.
Yep.
All right, next thing up on the agenda, number two. Public hearing for shared driveway, special permit, James Patton Road, lot 92, 108. James Simpson applicant. So this was advertised in the, what paper, Steve?
Clinton item.
Advertised in the Clinton item, so I'll go ahead now, read the legal ease. Special permit for shared driveway, James Patton Road pursuant to section 301-3.4.2. Access, the town of Sterling protective bylaws. Notice is hereby given that the planning board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, June 27th, 2024, 6:30 PM in room 205, Butterick Municipal Building, 1 Park Street. To review the special permit application for a shared driveway on James Patton Road, tax map 92, lot 108, James Simpson applicant. Copy of the plan can be reviewed at the planning department office during regular town office hours, Sterling Planning Board. So that being said, I'll take a motion to open the public hearing.
So?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is now open. So, who do we have?
Chris Stoddard, Stoddard Engineering, on behalf of the applicant. Jim Simpson is also on the board.
Who does that? Okay, come on up and...
Is this one, or we can spread out another plan?
Whatever you want, they're both the same.
Yeah, they're exactly the same plans, sir. So what we have here is we have two, well, what was one lot you folks a few months back?
Gave an A and R.
Yep, gave an A and R for these two individual lots here. What we do have is we have a wetland series that runs through between the road and the house lots, so what we feel is it makes sense to use a common shared driveway to cross in the most narrow point rather than have two impacts to the resource area. So what we're proposing is one 12-foot wide driveway with a culvert heading underneath it with 20-foot wide clear span per the fire department's regulations. Come up here and then one driveway splits off to this house. We have done soil testing, septic plants have been approved by the board health for both lots, both houses here. The IR planning, actually I believe, has Ecotec submitted for the NOI?
Ecotec submitted, would have the notice of intent filed by the board.
So that is in the process. And I believe one of the comments from the water department was that it's going to be required to have individual water services to the houses, and obviously we acknowledge that.
Yep, can you just say what you're doing as far as that goes? So they'll have individual water lines, what Jim's going to be doing there?
So, there's actually spaghetti lines going up the road, spaghetti being individual lines all the way up, so I believe Jim is in conversation of possibly extending a main all the way up to then tie off with two rather than running two individual courses all the way up from Red Stone Hill Road.
Yep. Good.
But, so, I guess, I mean, it's fairly, I call it simple, it's not simple, the crossing's a little complex, but like I said, it makes, we think it makes the most sense rather than have such huge impacts to resource areas having two individual courses.
So just for everybody, the Sterling Planning Board is the special permit granting authority for common driveways. The things that we look at in this are access, the width of the driveways, so they are showing, they are showing 20 feet, which is what the fire department is requiring now, clear span, 12 feet width on the driveways is great. It's showing it is paved, so if somebody pulls in here and rounds the corner, they don't dust out the guy to the left. As far as the wetland crossing goes, that's not in our purview. Our job is to look at the access. The fire department's gone up there, they've taken a look at it, they have no issues with access, there's plenty of visibility. So I don't see any issues on a planning board level. Does anybody have any questions on it?
I know sometimes it will run off when James Patton onto Red Stone Hill Road.
Yeah.
Washing out like gravel and dirt and stuff. So, we're actually pitching away from James Patton.
Okay.
So nothing from this site will actually enter James Patton. We made sure that we were under 3% slope, so the high point is the actual edge of road, everything else is sheeted, so we should have no, we should see no increased runoff.
Downhill, active downhill road.
Correct.
Above and beyond what's already there.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Board members, the only condition of approval I would offer out is that they obtain their order of conditions from conservation prior to pulling a building permit.
Yep.
All right, if the board has no questions, I'll open it up to the public. Is anybody out there here for this that has any questions on this at all?
Just got a memo out from Paul Vashon Lane. Paul Vashon Lane, is there a memo on the record that the fire chief did grant approval? Can I see it?
I have an email from the fire department.
Yeah, we only have the note.
And that's all it says, he has no accentations.
Period.
I can print it out if you like.
I'd like to see it, but, because knowing James Patton, that turning radius is tight as anything, it's a private way as it is. It's not even a public roadway.
What do you mean? Turning radius.
The turning radius to get into the, just one to get up the road, and I know that there's people here from James Patton, that's a narrow road for a fire truck access, and the turning radius to get into the shared drive is probably going to be fairly tight.
Well, it works for the people that live there now, doesn't it? Yeah, the minimums.
The memo for the fire car was 20 feet.
Yes, it is.
We can address only the conditions for this driveway, not those that exist for James Patton.
Right, just asking because I know how narrow it is.
Correct. However, at the same time, I would say on this plan, it does have a radius of 20 feet onto the driveway, which is all paved, so that is proper for what the fire department wants, and we will get the documentation from the fire department.
What's the necessity for the shared drive?
Excuse me? What's that? If you could recognize yourself.
I'm a voter, I live on James Patton Drive.
My setup, can you just state your name and your address?
Yeah, sure, Steve Ledger, 6 James Patton Drive.
Yep.
Is there a necessity that there can't be two driveways placed, or is it just a preference?
Well, like it was explained, it certainly makes less impact on the wetland if it's one driveway crossing the wetland and not two. So for just that reason alone, it's advantageous to do a common driveway, a shared driveway.
Not necessary. What's the difference, the cost, the cost differential?
Well, I just think the impact to the wetlands. Jim, you want to speak to that? Jim Simpson.
By Burby Road. It's not the cost, it's the fact that, having some experience doing this, I'm well aware that if I were to go in front of the conservation commission and ask them to blow another hole through their wetland, that they would not appreciate that. So if I can do it where there's an existing cartload and get across the wetland and then split it off, it's less environmental impact, which is what they'll be looking for.
Okay.
That's the only reason.
So they might, so they would say, they would approve one house, probably not two houses.
They might not like seeing two driveways go through. It's not their job to approve houses.
If I may, the question actually was if conservation commission was spoken to, and they haven't been, correct? Because that typically happens after plan approval, that they would not be favorable for two driveways. To me, that's speculation. I think if a plan went before the conservation commission with two driveways, then was denied as part of it, I could see coming back and saying, yes, the only solution is a single driveway, but we're not at that point. What he's asking is to put in a single driveway at the point in this wetlands that already has a car path, from what I understand. There's actually an established path through there.
An existing crossing.
And again, this is something that we have to approve. This isn't something that normally you just pull a building permit for and you throw in a shared driveway.
We don't really want to make it an impact on wetland anyway that we have. That's the only reason. We want to do one cross and then two. Could also put in my house, right? Is that an alternative? Well, there's two A and R lots, I mean, it can't be two. It's approved, it's an approval not required, so it's legally two buildable lots. But if conservation didn't approve two crossings...
Then we would approve one. Yeah. That's why we're here, that's why we're here, we're here to approve one. This is part of this whole discussion as to whether they need to go before the conservation commission with a plan for two driveways.
Yeah.
Or do they stop here first, ask for a single drive, and then go to the conservation commission with a single drive?
So, so if, if the abiding residents in this road didn't want a shared driveway, he could submit a plan for two separate crossings, go to conservation, seek approval, and if it's denied, he could come back to planning and try to get the special permit, is that accurate?
We wouldn't need...
Trying to understand if the carts before the...
We wouldn't, we wouldn't need anything to do with single driveways. It wouldn't come before the planning board. The reason why it's coming before the planning board is as a carve-out saying, if it's a shared driveway, they must come before us and get permission to do that. So if it was two driveways, we wouldn't even see these plans. He'd going before Concom, he'd go before the building inspector, he'd deal with everything else other than us.
Yeah.
Because it would be an old...
You got to cross the wetland regardless. Yeah.
Right, and to your point, I'll at least make this statement, I'm not in favor of shared driveways when the reasoning is that it will impact less wetlands. My own opinion is it also creates a cost differential for the builder. I also agree that, at least on this plan, you have a driveway almost in the middle of the lot, just for one, and now it's being shared. It's a 20-foot cut, but the driveway itself is only 12-foot wide. We all know that no one's going to maintain that extra four feet on either side, things are going to grow in, especially when there's probably going to be an argument between the two because it's a shared driveway, and philosophically, they're not common in town. It's not like we come up with a lot of common driveways, this is an ordinary course of business. We do, but they're not, they're not an ordinary course of business, we're approving one or two.
Common of what you're saying, the 20-foot cut that you're saying won't be maintained, well, that's standard on any driveway, any driveway needs a full 20-foot access.
Correct.
So that really...
No, my theory is that because it's a shared driveway, it turns into the argument as to who will maintain that.
They have an agreement on that.
There'll be an HOA in place between the two properties.
And the other part is, we're now putting a drive on a drive. So you have a private road, and what we're essentially doing is taking a private road, building another private road on that piece. We're calling it a shared driveway, but it is another labeled drive. That's just my opinion.
All right, Jim, what are you planning on building there? You planning on building single families?
Yes.
Mike, a couple years back, said you were planning on a couple duplexes.
Nope.
I think it's one of them, but...
You could, but I have two single family houses.
Probably all the two new homes that are there?
Probably somewhere between the two new homes and the existing homes.
Right, the playing shows...
The new homes are 3100 square feet plus, and the existing homes are 800 square feet.
Right.
It's quite a differential. Personally, if it was similar to the two homes that I built there in GLA, personally, I wouldn't really mind. I know the other residents don't want to see it, but I wouldn't be in favor of a small one being built there, or two small ones being built there. There are two 3,000-plus square foot homes right across the street, on the other side of James Patton Drive that were built there in the past 10 years.
And like you said, there's also some very small homes on James Patton.
Yeah, old homes, 60, 70 years old.
Okay, is that it from the public? Anybody else have any other comments? Excuse me?
Tara Ledger, his wife, 6 James Patton Drive. What would the, like, right now, we do our own plowing, we do everything, like, he actually paid to pave the road, and like, having construction trucks is going to, you know, make it worse. Like, so who would do the plowing and everything? Because right now, we all have an agreement, but now you're adding in a whole nother thing.
Well, I think you'd have to talk with the other people that are going to be coming in and add them to your agreement.
It would still be a private road. It would still be a private road.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, all right. And then what about fire hydrants? Are there going to be like new fire hydrants, or?
Is there any up there now?
No.
So is one at the beginning of the street?
I don't even know.
Yeah, it's at Mike's house.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So that would be it?
That would be it.
Okay.
Are there any additional ones? Or the fire department would have commented on that.
How many, how many members vote on the issue?
All votes.
What for the members here? Your members?
Right.
Any members have business engagements with the builder? Prior, prior business engagements?
Another question, sorry.
In regards to a private way on a private way, and we'll go back to what Mr. Temple said, so you're putting another road on a private way, it's a, shouldn't it meet some sort of roadway standard?
Why?
It's a driveway.
It's a driveway.
But I'm just saying.
Because it's a shared drive?
Okay, it's already, so it's not a road on top of a road.
Correct, it's not a road on top of a road, this is a drive and a shared driveway which we label as drives in this town.
Ways.
We will have a sign at the end that says "way".
That is reflected on the plan.
Yeah, it's actually noted in all the paperwork. Giving you a personal opinion, not any kind of bylaw or code.
Tree box is conservation, right? A lot of disturbance in wetlands.
It is. Any other questions, public, board? Any other questions? There's no other questions, and I'll welcome a motion that we approve the common driveway.
I want to make a note, there are three voters here that are not in favor of this approval. We're the ones in favor. So, we pay, we pay you.
Motion that we approve the shared driveway, James Patton.
With the conservation?
With the condition that he obtains his conservation approval for the wetlands crossing, files a notice of intent. I don't know how you would word that.
Issues in order of conditions.
Obtain his order of conditions.
Obtain his order of conditions prior to pulling a building permit.
So?
Second.
Any more discussion? See you none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Next.
So board members, what I'll do is I'll write up the decision tomorrow, share it with all of you and the applicant. Once you determine that it's good to go, I'll have Carl come in and sell it.
Thank you, folks.
Okay, next thing on our agenda, number three. Continued public meeting to review the site plan for the construction of the new cell tower at 56 Kendall Hill Road, tax map 112, lot 12. The applicant is Selco Partnership Horizon. So, just to refresh everybody's memories, the last time these guys were here, we sent them back, they needed to revise the plan to show some landscaping, some drainage issues, and some landscape in front of the cell tower fence. So that plan was submitted. And it looks good, so...
Graves' subsequent review of the revised plan.
Thank you. We did a stormwater report, which you required, the engineer here, Greg, added the harbor bitey, that was requested by one of the neighbors, and that was it, and we addressed all of Graves' comments.
Do you have a problem with reading them for us, please? You can, do you have a copy of Graves?
I don't have one.
Okay, I have, I have it for you. Steve's got one. You've got one? So if we could just, if we could just go through these? Borrow mine? That I won't be able to see. So, you can start at the hydrology and stormwater management, too, and just, and just go through two to six.
Do you want me to read them or just say you addressed them or what do you want?
Uh, just read them.
Okay.
Yep, read, read what he wanted addressed, and then your response.
Okay, so the proposed project is a commercial facility, as such must comply with the Massachusetts EP stormwater standards and stormwater handbook. Documentation needs to be submitted to demonstrate construction phase and long-term operation compliance with the standards in the handbook. And Greg and his firm did a stormwater report, which Graves' engineer reviewed in sans doubt font. In addressing the Massachusetts EP stormwater standards, this is three, and to minimize potential to long-term erosion caused by concentrated runoff, the design engineer should refrain, refrain from directing stormwater from the new driveway to the intersection of the new driveway and the existing driveway. This intersection already receives stormwater runoff from the existing driveway. The design engineer should strive to discharge runoff from the new driveway at multiple locations, and may wish to consider the use of rain gardens or similar BNP. So on the previous iteration, if you were confronting with May, and it's still in the final plan, obviously, a pipe was clipped in right where Mr. Walsh asked us to put a pipe in so that the water did not flow across the driveway, so it's kept the water under it. And the stormwater report passed, basically, it met all the standards without the need to add rain gardens, but, but it complies with the Massachusetts standards. Number four, there's an existing roadside swale upgrading in the intersection of the existing driveway and the new driveway. The swale is approximately one foot deep and three feet wide, or is located under the electric transmission wires. A culvert of similar hydraulic capacity to the swale needs to be provided under the new driveway, and that's the pipe that I was just talking about, that they added at the, at the intersection with the driveway turns. A construction detail for the gravel driveway showing the proposed driveway with gravel specifications and gravel thickness should be added to the site plans. You've got that, Greg?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, and that was it, that was it on that, and then when we were here the last time, you, you applied a condition that we put the other idea around the fence.
Yep. Who's going to maintain those, that treper you put in?
You are the biteys?
Yep.
I don't, I don't know that they would need much maintenance, the Verizon would always want branches not to grow into their area and stuff like that, so they would have, yeah, they would have regular maintenance on that.
So they got... They're going to maintain it, Verizon.
Weed's coming up, yeah, Verizon or whoever they hired to manage the tower project, yeah.
I know I sent you all the Graves' subsequent review memo, maybe if you read off of this, you'll, you'll...
Sure. Yeah, this is the same one, we just read Graves' comments on these, or?
Is that the same one we just read, or is that a different one?
Well, this is that letter with his comments from the...
The date should be June 26.
Yeah. Okay, so on, on number two, the proposed project must comply with the Massachusetts stormwater standards. Acknowledged, the stormwater management report was submitted, the stormwater management report and the plan show a small amount of disturbance in comparison to the large tract of land on which the project is located, and stormwater from the project area will be discharged in the same manners currently exists to a large area brush on the subject property. GEI is satisfied that the project documentation shows reasonable compliance with the Massachusetts EP stormwater standards and stormwater handbook. Then on two, which was to minimize potential long-term erosion, acknowledged the plans proposed to maintain the grades along the new driveway, which will result in a cross-slope and will refrain, refrain from concentrating stormwater. Number four, this was the pipe one, sheet CO2A was revised to include an 18-inch ductile iron drainage pipe where the proposed driver will cross the roadside swale in a pipe trench detail. GEI has no issue with the use of this pipe, provided that a riprap apron of sufficient dimension and stone size is installed at the discharge end of the pipe to dissipate water velocity and prevent scour and erosion of the existing downswell, grading swale. The top of the riprap apron will need to be flushed at the adjacent swale bottom and sides. The riprap cannot simply be dumped and graded at the end of the pipe. And you've got that on your latest drawings?
Uh, correct, yes.
Okay. And then five was asking for the construction detail for the gravel driveway. Acknowledged, sheet A2 was revised to include a typical crown gravel access cross-section construction detail. GEI understands the new portion of the driveway will have a cross slope instead of a crown where the driveway runs parallel to the overhead transmission lines. And then number six was that they did not review equipment or structures. So that was it, yeah, so we went through the whole list and addressed all.
You have web two dated August 14th, when you asked?
Okay, yep, got it. All right, so I have some draft conditions, so...
Uh, board members, yep.
James, any, James, anything since you...
No. No.
Okay, so I'll just go to the rest of them are standard. I'll just go to the site-specific conditions, is what we have right now. The applicant or any successive owner of this facility shall allow the town of Sterling free access to use the tower for the housing and maintenance of town radio equipment. During construction, the applicant shall refrain from directing stormwater from the new driveway to the intersection of the new driveway and the existing driveway. All construction, maintenance, and delivery vehicles shall exclusively use the properties driveway at 56 Kendall Hill Road for entry-exit. And did we get the answer on the maintenance?
You said Verizon's...
Yeah, Verizon or whoever they contracted with to manage the site would manage those, would maintain the vegetation.
And nine, that Verizon will do the maintenance on that, so it doesn't grow wild or out of control. I'm not saying that they work there every week.
For some reason, the shrubs die or something.
Yeah, and the good thing is they're arbor byde. They pretty much grow straight up.
Yep.
And the deer eat the bottoms, so I mean, you're good with that.
I suppose if they're close.
Can I ask you on the wording of the access? You know, there's no objection to giving access, but there's nothing there about it. It's just a town.
During one of the primary meetings, there was a resident that had concern their property would be used as access rather than...
No, not that one, probably the fire department access, so the town...
Oh, the town radio.
The town radio equipment, right, which we've agreed to, and that's fine, but I mean, typically, the way those conditions work out is, so not every town department shows up and says you have to accommodate it, so there's only so much structural space or capacity. So, it would be, you know, as reasonably...
The only town of Sterling.
So, it's just going to be the fire department?
The only condition is the town of Sterling.
The applicant or any successive owner of this facility shall allow the town of Sterling free access and use of the tower for the housing and maintenance of town radio equipment.
Okay.
Please find DPW Sterling. Those are the only three that have radios. Those are the only three agencies I can think of that have radios.
This condition was dictated to be by the fire department.
Yeah.
So, that's the fire department.
Yeah, they have no objection to doing that. What we usually try to avoid is...
Multiple towns.
Yeah, residents climbing the tower.
No, 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 not that at all, but they, you know, they've got their antennas up there, and then somebody says, well, we got to, you know, go behind you or go below you. It's where it fits, and they've designed it so it'll fit the town's equipment. That's probably not an issue, but that's the typical way we see that, so...
I don't know how else to word that.
Are you saying it's reasonable?
Is the word reasonable access, that way we can't say that we take the top of their own...
Is it specific?
Yeah, reasonable access is fine.
We're basically talking about putting antenna equipment up there, and I understand his concern that the town could then theoretically demand that it be placed in a certain specific spot.
Specific for the action.
That actually is where you need your equipment. That's your concern, correct?
Yeah, that's it. So, reasonable is fine. I mean, they always work it out with whatever the town is.
Yeah, it's pretty common.
They do this a lot places.
I've dealt with it in another agency. I just don't know about the word reasonable, if that makes sense to everyone.
Add it.
Add it. So, I will welcome a motion that we... Oh, sorry.
I have a question.
Oh, for questions to the public, yep.
I wrote that. Laura Ritchie, Sterling resident. I'm wondering what kind of security you're going to have at this place, because I have in my mind about what happened in West Boylston a few months ago, where they had these transients from New York and New Jersey coming up here, stealing copper and wires and stripping the thing, and the police caught them down there. What kind of security you're going to have?
They caught them at a tower, is that what you're saying, or?
At the, in West Boylston, they caught them. They had an alarm that went off. You've got an alarm on this?
Oh, yeah, these things are monitored 24/7 remotely. Yeah, they've got alarms, they can tell if the equipment's working, if somebody disturbed anything. No, 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 it's going off in a building someplace where somebody's monitoring it. Then they'll call the police, the police will show up.
I think that's how they got caught in the other one, was the alarm went off.
An alarm went off.
Silence, alarm.
Yeah, but you're right, yeah.
Very bothering.
No, yeah, absolutely.
But they don't ring an alarm at the site. They ring the alarm in the headquarters, wherever Verizon's monitoring this stuff, or whatever company it was that was...
I haven't heard of it by there, but is this thing ugly to the neighbors?
I think they're all okay now, after a couple of discussions and a couple of meetings.
The plan itself has already been through several revisions. The only issues that we're dealing with now are the corrections to the Graves' engineering, which everything seems satisfactory, and making sure that the conditions are proper. The placement of the tower is already set.
Yeah, this is right next to the power lines, too. So, it's not in the middle of a field or something like that.
Okay. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Then I will welcome a motion that we approve the Verizon site plan.
So moved.
Subject to the conditions that we just read.
Eric, you need to sit out because you weren't here, so it's...
Yep, Eric recused himself because he wasn't here. One.
All right, you know the drill. I'll write the decision tomorrow, circulate it amongst you folks and the applicant. Once it's good to go, Carl, you'll come in and sign.
So, I'll take a motion that we approve the site plan for the cell tower. Second?
Second.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, fire department.
David, we're ready for you.
You ready there?
Okay, next thing up, number five. Yep. It's a public meeting to review site plan for a new 6,300 square foot commercial building at 112 Pratt's Junction Road, tax map 50, lot 15. The applicant, David Favrell. Will we find my legal on this one? Legal notice, site plan for new commercial building pursuant to section 301-6.4, site plan review, the town of Sterling protected by law, notices hereby given that the planning board will hold a public meeting on Thursday, June 27, 2024, at 6:30 PM in room 205 of the Butterick Building, 1 Park Street, to review the site plan of a new 6,300 square foot commercial building at 110 Pratt's Junction Road, tax map 50, lot 15. The applicant is David Favrell. A copy of the site plan can be reviewed at the planning department office during regular town hall office hours. Sterling Planning Board. So, that being said, who do we have here to present the site plan tonight?
Thank you. My name is Frank Partland from Billings and Roy, here on behalf of the applicant, Dave Favrell. The proposed project, located south of 190 on the western side of Pratt's Junction Road. Property is approximately acre in size with 137 feet of frontage on Pratt's Junction Road. It's currently undeveloped lot, more or less cleared of all vegetation with a paved access driveway from Pratt's Junction Road. Existing conditions plan. There's an existing driveway onto the property from Pratt's Junction Road. Site is currently being utilized as an area to store equipment, vehicles, and materials, and the property is located within the light industrial district, which extends to all abiding properties and all the tenants. It's also located in the wireless communication district. Work consists of the construction of a 6,300 square foot commercial building, associated parking, drainage system, several two-inlets going to an infiltration stormwater management area. The new building will be served by municipal water from Pratt's Junction Road and a proposed onsite sewage disposal system located in front here. NCS soil survey indicates that nearly all the site is underlinged by soils classified as hydrologic soils group A. Those soils have high infiltration rates even when thoroughly wet. There's subject testing in front of the lot, confirm that. We have a total of, at this point now, after reviewing with the town planner, seven parking spaces shown on site. The original application had had three spaces and then four internal to the building. We, after some discussions with the planner, have designated four spaces that will be unmarked on this portion of the site. The spaces up here, where we have two standard spaces and an accessible space, will be paved, as well as the accessible route from the accessible space to the front door of the building.
So, I was just asking, is that your aisle to the left of that?
Correct, yes. That hatch area will be the aisle, and it'll be paved. The remainder of the parking area is supposed to be kind of a gravel, similar to the other industrial uses in the vicinity.
So, are you going through your narrative one at a time?
I was going through a narrative kind of point by point. I can...
That's what we would like, if you would do that. So, which one would you...
So, at this point, I am on...
Design standards?
I'm in site approval, design standards, yes. Certainly. And I apologize for not putting page numbers in. It annoys me. Yep, so, section 2.2.1, parking and loading requirements. The principal use of the building is warehousing and storage, which would require one per 2,000 square feet of area. The complication results in 3.15, rounded up to four required parking stalls. In this application, we had proposed three external and then the four inside. This is where, since this originally had been submitted, I'd had the back and forth with the planner, and we made the determination that we should designate all additional parking spaces outside and not count the internal spaces for the building. So, we continue to have a total of seven spaces, which exceeds the requirement. Item D, first of the town center district, which we are not in. Section 3.2.4, parking lot design. Parking spaces shall be nine feet by 18 feet at least. All the proposed spaces are 10 by 20. Part B, all parking areas except those serving residential premises shall be paved. So, our primary parking spaces are paved. The additional unstriped spaces located in the grad gravel parking are not at this time.
Your plan shows them at a nine-foot width. Is it still legal? Your revised plan...
My revised plan, you're right, does show nine.
Chose nine by 20.
Nine by 20.
Not nine by 18.
Not nine, nine by 18, and not 10, yes.
They're just not 10-foot wide.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
The parking stalls in the paved area shall be delineated by painted lines. These additional parking stalls that are supposed to be unstriped, they're not really anticipated to be used much on the demand of the property, those additional four, but we just wanted to designate the area on the plan to show that we had the space in the event that someone else moves into the property.
Did you say you're going to stripe those to show...
So, they look like parking spots if they need it? These would be striped. These were not, we weren't planning on striping these because they're in the gravel. Parking stall, parking lot aisles shall be designed in accordance with the following. So, our proposed parking stalls are provided with more than 24 feet of aisle width. So, as you can see on the site plan, that's just 20 feet. There's well more than 24 feet aisle width in there. All artificial lighting shall be arranged and shielded so as to prevent direct air from the light source on any public way or other property. We propose dark sky compliant light fixture only at the entranceway to the building itself. There's no other proposed site lighting. Parking facilities shall provide specially designated parking stalls for the physically handicap in accordance with the AAB of Commonwealth Massachusetts Department of Public Safety. We have shown the one stall that's required per that regulation for this number of parking stalls. Let's say offhand, adding on under 25 parking stalls is only one accessible space required. The proposed building is not considered a driving facility. And then J is another town center district item, which is not applicable. 3.2.5 is driveway design. Access driveways to non-residential premises shall be 10 feet wide for one-way traffic and 18 feet for two-way traffic. Provided however that driveway serving two-way traffic may be reduced to 10 feet in width when the driveway does not exceed 50 feet. Does not serve more than five parking spaces, is not regularly used by trucks, and town Sterling protected by law 16 provides sufficient turnaround so as not to require backing into a public way. Driveways should not exceed 22 feet in width. We have a 20-foot drive aisle coming up in Pratt's Junction Road with 25-foot radii. So, the opening at the road would be 70 feet wide, however, it'll throw down to 20. To extent feasible, lots and parking areas in non-residential districts shall be served by common private access ways, or minimize the number of curb cuts. Such common access ways shall be in accordance with the functional standards of the subdivision rules and regulations of the planning board for road construction, sidewalk, and drainage. Proposed documentation shall be submitted with the application demonstrating that proper maintenance repair and apportionment of liability for the common access way in any shared parking areas has been agreed upon by all lot owners. Common access ways may serve any number of adjacent parcels deemed appropriate by the board. So, while our entranceway was designed in accordance with the functional standards of the subdivision rules and regulations, this driveway is only serving the one building. So, this parcel, 110, has their own driveway, as does the next several lots. And that's consistent with what was already there. Landscape requirements for parking areas. All off-street parking and loading areas, storage areas, refuse storage and disposal areas, and service areas shall be screened from all adjoining lots and streets by a landscape area with a width of 20 feet, except that in the town center district, the landscape area shall be five feet. Such landscaped areas shall be densely planted with a mixture of deciduous and evergreen trees and shrubs, and shall create an effective visual barrier. This provision shall not apply to parking areas for single-family developments or to side lot lines separating one commercial or industrial use from another. So, here, we said that the abutting parcels are zoned for industrial uses and neglected the clause that said separating side lot lines, separating one commercial industrial use from another. So, we know that this would be something of discussion with the board.
Yep, so I'll jump in on that.
Certainly. If you read the bylaw here in its entirety, just like you did, when you get to the last line of that paragraph one, it says this provision shall not apply to parking areas for single-family dwellings or to side lot... for single-family dwellings or to side lot lines separating one commercial or industrial use from another. So I would think the sidelines of this property would fall under that.
Correct.
So you wouldn't need anything there. But at the beginning of it, all open off-street parking and loading areas, storage areas, refuge, storage, and disposal areas and service areas shall be screened from all adjoining lots and streets by landscape area with a width of 20 feet. It does say streets.
Streets, yes.
Adjoining lots and streets. So we know we don't have to do the adjoining lots. We don't have to do anything down the sides.
Right.
But it leaves the street.
It does leave the street and it's a screening of parking areas. So one thing that I was looking at when I was investigating the other parcels and looking at the type of, any type of planting or screening that was put here is that the building for this parcel, the way our lot comes over and back, a lot of this is screened by this building already.
Already?
That wouldn't provide any screening.
From this side.
Or right... And we're potentially open to what the board would require here if... I understand that a waiver from this is a zoning concern, not planning board.
Right. So if you wanted a waiver from that, it would require the zoning board. But I'll just read this again because, yeah, I just want to be clear on this because it's not us, it's not me, it's what this says.
Absolutely, yes.
So you said it's a parking screen, but it's more than that. So all open off-street parking, loading areas, storage areas, refuge, storage, and disposal areas, and service areas. So could we call that loading area, the front doors? You know, would you consider that your loading area?
That probably could be considered a loading area, yes.
And those four front parking spots.
And there would be the four unstriked.
Just a question, so I can clarify this in my own mind. So my understanding is what we're looking at is by the bylaw requiring a screen towards the front of the property at the road or closer at the road. Correct. They would meet the code, which is 301326. It mentions areas shall be densely planted with a mixture of deciduous and evergreen trees and shrubs, shall create an effective visual barrier. Provision shall not apply, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, as we've always gone over. Your discussion on the side lot lines, the view from the street, to me, that's not applicable. At least for me, the only thing that I'm looking at is the very front of the property where it runs against the road. If someone is three or four lots up and can see it from the road, to me, that is not the concern that this addresses. It would only be the very front. Correct, from there is irrelevant. That's someone else's property. We're dealing with just directly in front of the property itself. Correct? In that, from the board? Just want to make sure I...
I think you can say that, yeah. Just the front.
Yep.
So if you wanted, if you didn't want to do that...
Right.
We couldn't, we don't have the authority to grant you that waiver. That would be the zoning board because it's a zoning bylaw that requires that. But again, you don't need anything on the sides.
Right. And let's be clear on the terminology, it's not a waiver, it's a variance.
Correct.
Thank you for that, I appreciate that. So Dave, I'd like to, it's ultimately up to you what you want, how you want to approach this. Do we want to try with the zoning board or do we want to...
So just to be clear, so I understand this as well. Where the intent of that is to put a 20-foot wide buffer along this particular area. Holding off of the driveway.
Proper access for driveway and dump side.
And accounting for the septic grading. So on our property, we might not be able to get the full 20 because of where the septic landed, but we could have a, potentially a screened landscape area in front of it.
But you will not be able to plant on your septic, so you'd have to work around.
So we could probably have a full 20, even as a reserve. We could potentially do a full 20 where we could make, where we wouldn't be impinging on the septic system.
It looks on the plan that you're a foot or at 20 feet plus, correct, from the septic?
Yes.
Yeah, so the septic effectively shouldn't be affected.
Right.
My big concern, and again, to be considerate through the septic, root infiltration into a leaching field. So I would like to maintain as far away as possible, not showing, not clear on where that 20 foot lies, but would the board consider something less than 20, maybe 18 or 15 feet?
Can't. It's a bylaw.
Right.
We can't, unfortunately, we can't. However, please realize, it's a 20-foot buffer that says here again, mixture of deciduous and evergreen trees and shrubs. This is not asking you to plant trees at the 20-foot mark as close as you can to the septic.
Right.
Okay? There's also shrubs, shallow rooted shrubs, whatever. The buildup of that doesn't have to be ending right at that septic, at least that's the way I see it. This is more of a landscaping issue to me than it is, you know, we're telling you to plant a gigantic row of trees that would destroy the septic system in several years.
I'm more clear now on that, thank you. And I think that we could certainly achieve, you know, some sort of a barrier for that purpose along Pratt's Junction Road.
Would the board need to see that on a revised plan or is it sufficient to be an approval condition knowing that we couldn't get a building permit without having that?
Before, even before we address that, I think there's also a couple other issues with the plan. The one question I had, just to step back for a moment from this, is we talk about paved spaces. According to requirement, you need four paved spaces. You only have three correctly?
Yes.
Paved?
Yes.
Where would you put the fourth paved space? I hate the idea to force you to pave this one spot that kind of sits as an island, but it's required.
If we needed to find a fourth paved space, Dave and I have discussed reorienting these so that they're along the building.
Yeah, because you would, you're required by the bylaw to have four paved spaces.
To have four.
Yeah, and you've run out of width because that was one of the first things I thought was, but you're looking at three nine-foot spots and eight-foot way for the wheelchair van and then a three and a half foot wide infiltration area that you have on your design. So you're directly against that property line. You don't have any...
You wouldn't go any further to the right. And I know the calculation comes out to 3.15.
Correct.
You have to log up to the highest.
Yeah, and I also don't want that to create undue issues with the entire property.
Unless you want, it's your solution, correct? Unless you want to ask for a special permit to reduce one.
Does the special permit request go to this board or...
To this board, yeah. We'd be the ones that would grant that. So would that require another meeting or could we do that here tonight?
As a special permit, there are special notice requirements that we would have to notice.
Delay it even further.
We'd have to notice it as a hearing as opposed to a meeting.
So the question then becomes, do you pave some area of that where you have the other two, four spots lined out so that you get your fourth paved spot? You meet the intent of the law, you meet the letter of the law, but it doesn't create this undue waste of two to three months possibly of time trying to chase a special permit?
We could, I think I could reconfigure this area. And find a fourth spot.
Okay. Because the only question I had of probably the board, as I know in the past, we've had these, now I'm assuming these bays are truck sized, correct? 18-wheeler, 10-wheelers, you know?
All 10-wheelers.
10-wheelers. Do we need turning rigs on any plan? The only reason I bring it up is because on a prior hearing we had, they had semi-trailer deliveries and we wanted to see those radiuses on a plan. This is significantly different, so I didn't know if it was required. I also didn't know that the fire department didn't have any concerns, if I understand that.
The style building for what it's doing, though.
Thank you.
So that being said, it sounds like we're going to need a plan revision with the parking and showing some landscaping in the front.
Yes.
So do you have just two more things?
Yep.
You did get a review letter from D P W. I believe you've already addressed their comments.
Yes, and those would be incorporated in this revision.
Okay. So that just leaves one more issue that was identified by Graves Engineering, and that is soil testing at the proposed infiltration basin. We confirm soil suitability for infiltration and the depth of estimated seasonal high groundwater.
Still have to do a test in the center of the basin where the basin's going?
Yes, we have the soil testing for the septic. It indicated good soils on site. We just hadn't done an additional test for the stormwater basin.
You do that and get that to Graves, they'll review it, and that'll settle up with Graves.
Right.
If that can't happen by the next meeting, we can certainly put that in the conditions that they do that test of the basin.
And I have, I know this is other towns, but that has been a condition that Graves has agreed with and gone along with when there's been demonstrably good soils on a site. So it's not anything that's out of line.
That's why I brought it up, so. I don't think I need to read off, do you want me to read off? Comments from the D P W. Why don't I just go through them real quick? The applicant shall be aware that the town intends to resurface Pratt's Junction Road either in late summer or fall of 2024 or spring of 2025. The applicant shall install any necessary street utility connections prior to the road resurfacing as cutting of the new road will not be allowed. It appears to last several feet of driveway towards Pratt's Junction Road, runs out into Pratt's Junction Road. The developer shall grade the driveway entrance in such a way that as much stormwater remains on site as possible. On sheet C5, there is a tapping sleeve and a valve detail. The utility notes on sheet C2.0 state the water service will be two inches, thus not requiring a tapping sleeve. Regardless, tapping sleeves and valves will not be allowed and the details shall be removed. If a fire sprinkler service is required, the valve shall be cut into the main with a shutdown. This work may need to be completed at night due to the nature of the business on that street. The applicant shall provide information as to why two-inch service is necessary for this building. If the building use does not require that large of a service, it should be sized per building use. The developer shall follow the latest edition of the Town of Sterling Department of Public Works Water Department Rules and Regulations. The rules and regulations lay out material installation requirements along the fees associated with connection and other miscellaneous items. Copy is attached to this letter. So, and you incorporate those on your...
Yes, these we incorporated. I forwarded draft comments to Stephen earlier this week.
All right. So based on the fact that we're going to need another plan that shows those incorporated, the landscaping and the reconfigured parking, David, I'm assuming you want to get going on this as soon as possible. So we've done it in the past. When we set our next meeting for July, we could possibly do it in two weeks. See if we can get a quorum in two weeks and get you in here sooner.
Appreciate that, thank you, Paul.
Okay, I'm away on July 11th. If you don't mind meeting on a Wednesday night, we could do it the 10th.
I want to be here two and a half weeks of July, so.
So that leaves the 18th, that cuts it by a week if you want to have it here, the regular date.
So we got, so we can't put it together on the 11th?
Or on the 2nd, at least.
Monday, the 15th, Tuesday, the 16th?
I'm not back until the 17th.
So that would be the 18th at the earliest.
I can do the 18th.
You want to move our regularly scheduled July meeting from the 25th to the 18th?
Yeah.
I would appreciate that as well because I am on vacation the 25th.
Okay, I do need to check with our site plan consultant because that's when we told him to come back on the 25th. But barring any problems with his schedule, we'll bring him out here for the 18th.
All right, so when we get to that spot on the agenda, we'll use the 18th. So that's the best we can come up with, to get it done sooner for you. As long as you get us all back in time, kind of looked at, should be good.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. So I would accept the motion here that we continue the public hearing to July 18th. So, I have a second. Second.
And Stephen, do you need a letter for that from me to request that continuance or...? No, okay. Sometimes do, sometimes don't. Thank you all very much.
You've all been through the chapter land withdrawal process before. You've got two decisions, or one, two options for your decision. Either recommend that the town exercise its right of first refusal and buy it, or not exercise its right of first refusal and not buy it.
So be consistent with what we've been doing in the past, I would welcome the motion that we recommend to the select board that do not purchase.
So move.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Send it off.
Next up is planning board discussion regarding new site plan regulations. Last month, we met with our consultant and between then and now, I asked you to look over the example site plan regulations and site plan zoning provisions from other towns and flag any that you thought you'd like to see for Sterling. I did get some feedback from Eric. Anyone else have anything that you want to give me to pass on to our consultants?
I don't have them with me, but I do have them. I'll see them out there.
I'm pretty close. Give it back to your team again.
Okay. Sooner the better, so that you can show up here on the 18th with something for us to react to.
Make sure we put that in there. Hopefully you'll let us know if that's something that conflicts with something that is...
Reorganization of planning board officers.
I think we should do that with a full board.
Want to move that to the next agenda?
Yeah, we need five members here, in my opinion. I know it'll be difficult just because of the summer, but...
It should be done with a full board.
Yeah, agree.
All right. And in addition to reorganizing our officers, I'm going to need a volunteer to be Sterling's planning board representative to the Monticuce Regional Planning Commission. That was Patty?
Yes.
Patty. And Carl, you were Sterling's representative to the...
M S R P.
Yeah, the joint transportation committee. So we'll tackle that at our next meeting. Set July evening date, we set the 18th. Other than that, it's just approval of two sets of minutes, one from April 25th and another from May 16th.
So Val called my attention to something because we were just going over stuff. I think him and I are the only ones that can go on this particular set of... Can we do that?
25th?
With just two?
Let's see, Carl, Val, yeah, you're right, we'll have to...
Leave that for the next meeting.
Okay, so that just leaves, you need...
You mean May 16th?
Three out of five. And two of you were there. So that leaves May 16th, which all four of you were here for that one. That was our meeting with the consultant.
Sorry. I've looked them over and it looked good to me.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, that'll take a motion. We accept the minutes of May 16th, 2024. So move?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so just to wrap up from tonight, tomorrow I'll be preparing the shared driveway decision and the Verizon site plan decision. Should be able to get both of those out for your review tomorrow. And I'll contact our site plan consultant and see if he can make the... That's it, guys.
All right. Well, a motion to...
To adjourn?
Yes, second.
All in favor?